I'm not saying that.
At least I gave him enough carrots to shut him up during the meeting, I hope.
Um, mine'll be in here in a little while.
I want to see the palm trees going in the background. Okay, about a, we got about a minute, folks. Let's see, who do we have on here so far? I see Chris, I see Odin. Hugh, I heard you.
I'm on by phone.
By phone, very good. Dan, are you there?
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Dan.
Hey, Dan, good to hear from you. Phil?
Phil, um, I saw him.
Okay, Annie, you're on there?
Yep, I'm here.
Very good.
I've got to say, though, RJ's got the coolest icon, you know, his little profile user, Teddy. I love it. Go, RJ.
Okay, everybody, it's six o'clock. Why don't we get going? I think everybody's ready. I'd like to start off, I say, and welcome to our January 5th Council workshop. And consistent with Governor Inslee's Order 20-28.14, dated December 8, 2020, all public meetings continue to be held remotely. We're following the directions of that order, and the meeting is being held remotely. The subject for this evening workshop is the City Council to have a discussion related to the selection of a mayor. Now, there will be time for public comments at the 7:00 PM meeting, so we won't entertain any during this meeting here. Be more than enough time in the seven o'clock meeting where citizens can have the opportunity twice to be able to say something. Now, I'd like to say that for city staff physically attending the meeting, here in the City Hall, we have City Administrator Katie Allen. Good to see you, Katie, IT Manager Todd Henderson, and myself. So, recognize City Council, that's in attendance. I'll do it again. I did it a moment ago. I believe we have Annie is here. Annie? Odin? I see that. We have, is Phil on now?
I am, I'm here. I had to get some water, sorry.
Very good. I know that we have Dan, I know we have Hugh, and we have Chris. I think we have everybody attended, so welcome. So I'd like to point out, to participate in Zoom, the public can choose to, I can, by choosing the chat, feature it on Zoom. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until the time for you to speak. So I would like to say also that on my computer setup here, I can only see about five people at one time. So if you raise your hand, if I miss it, Todd will be keeping track of that, and he'll throw something at me to get my attention. So keep in mind, if you have your hand up, I certainly will get to you. So I thank you for working with us on this. So I'd like to get started, and what I'd like to do is turn this over to Katie at this time to go over a lot of the information we got from the MRSC. Katie, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potemps. Good evening, council members and members of the public that are participating. So when our Mayor Brickner stepped down a week ago tonight, we quickly contacted MRSC for advice on what and how a council position can and should be filled. I'm non-an attorney, and just so that you know, our attorney's not here tonight. He had a conflict. So I'm going to share with you the information. Actually, I'm going to make it very simple. But I already shared this information with all of you by email. It can get pretty complicated when the attorneys start citing RCWs and WACS and all those things. So I'm going to boil it down to something that I understand. And I want to make sure, if there's any questions or concerns, you pose them. And/or if I don't know, I will tell you I don't know, and then we will get back to you with some good information. The last thing I want to do is speculate or provide you that information. So basically, the existing term has three years left on it. However, the next general election, which is November of 2021, would be the time that individuals can submit their name to run for the position of mayor. So the councils can select somebody who's qualified from either themselves or the city, and they can appoint them by a majority vote of the City Council. You all know that if you don't do it in 90 days, then the Spokane County Commissioners can make that decision. And you will be appointing someone until the general, until the results of the general election are certified, which is roughly probably nine or 10, well, 10 months from now, approximately. Then, when this is on the ballot in November of 2021, it will be for two years to fill out the remaining term, they call it a short term, of the mayor's position, which would be through 2023. The other thing I'll mention is, once you appoint someone now, they would, you know, be sworn in. And after the general election, they would not have to wait till the beginning of the year to take office. They would take office upon certification of the election results. The other thing that I wanted to mention is if you do fill a position amongst yourselves and it creates a vacancy, kind of the same thing happens. You have 90 days to fill it. Typically, for those of you that have been on the council, you've seen that process before. Typically, the council posts it to the community, an interview process is conducted, and then the council has, they deliberate, and the council votes in public to make a selection for filling the vacant term. It is the same process. They would be appointed, move, the election, and then at the election, the results of the election would result in the person being appointed for a short term or a long term, depending on which of you selected, was selected. So some of you have three years left on your term, and some of you have one year left on your term. And so it will all hinge on the duration of the remainder of the term. So I made it pretty simple. Like I said, I'm non-an attorney, but I wanted to just make sure that we had clarity. And if you have any questions or comments, I would love to, I would love to provide clarity if I said anything that was a little bit confusing. Thank you.
Before we move forward, are there any questions in the council at this point?
Yes, yes.
Yes, Councilman Kaminski.
Hi, so Katie, I've got a question for you with regards to an appointment from the community. Hypothetically, if the council decides to go that way, and we put out for, I'm assuming it follows a similar path as appointing a council member, where we would put out an advertisement of sorts and get resumes or applications, and then we would interview and then select. What if the council doesn't want any of those candidates? Do we have to select from the pool, or can we then go back to the drawing board? As long as, obviously, we're still in the 90-day window.
Thank you for the question. So two things I want to mention. One is, to be qualified to be the mayor, two things have to happen. You have to be a registered voter, and you have to have had a residence in the city of Liberty Lake for 12 months, minimum of 12 months. If you identify the process, and someone put their name in, or multiple people put their name into the hat, so to speak, and you interviewed all of them, and you did not select any of them, then you're going to be up against the clock, because if once 90 days expire, it's going to go back to the Commissioner. And so, yeah, so basically, if you identify a process, then you will need to follow that process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Good crushing, Chris. Dan, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Katie, to clarify the perspective of appointing a community member, I'll interpret briefly that we don't necessarily have a defined procedure. For example, it is, would potentially not be necessary, for example, to advertise or to solicit that committee members request the opportunity. I kind of had considered it is the role of the council to nominate members of the community in that regard. Is that, I mean, that's our discretion, is my understanding, as action for this council.
Correct. So the RCWs do not tell you the process for selecting a candidate. You would have to define that. The process that I identified was the process that we had used in the past to select a city council person. But again, just for clarity, the council can decide the process. So you're correct, Councilmember Dan, you could say, hey, each council member, you get to nominate someone from the community, and as long as they met the qualifications, then you could nominate them. But the only thing I'll caution you is, you have to identify the process before you start the selection process.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Katie. Before, yeah, before I recognize any other council members have a question, let me, let me interject this, because what we've kind of looked at is this, is a three-point process to this. One is, Phil, it's necessary that I would recommend that what we, as a council, we first established, the what and how, and that would be, do we want to make the decision that it will be open to everybody, all citizens? Or do we want to make the decision that we'll only choose from the council? Second recommendation would be is that, then when? When would this happen? When would this come about? And the third, once we've established that, would be who? So just to throw that out, so, any other questions? If none, I would throw out for consideration of the council, that we get into the what and how, which is, which of those two do we entertain? We can have it in discussion, make a decision, so we can move on. And that choice would be, correctly if I'm wrong, would be, do we want to open this up to the entire citizens of Liberty Lake? Or open it up strictly to the council? Comments from the, any of the council members? Hugh, I saw your hand go up.
Well, I'm going to throw a couple of opinions. One, I would hope that we outline a process that doesn't put our backs against the wall on the 90-day timeline. I think that's important. But I also value that there may be people out there that have not been identified as of yet that, that could arise from, from a process that we may find to be a good candidate. I don't know, I don't have anybody off the top of my head. I don't, I don't know how that would work. But I, I would hope, even if we did a process and allowed people to apply, that, that through that same process, council members could apply. But I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, we can apply just the same, put our names in the hats, and ultimately, I would hope that it would lie in the council's control to then appoint people based on that application process. I don't think it needs to be a long, drawn-out process. I would hope that we wouldn't have to legally go, go through lengthy advert, lengthy and expensive advertising processes to do this. But that ultimately, it lie in the council's control, so that the council can identify, is there somebody that is a, that we believe is a proven leader that could fill this role through the end of the year or through the election cycle? So I would value, I think where I'm going with this is, I don't believe we should go through the appointment process tonight. I, I think we should get great discussion out of, out of what we're here to do, especially in, in this workshop. But I would, I would lobby for allowing maybe a week, maybe two weeks. I don't think we need to go more than two weeks, personally. I don't know that we need to go more than a week, but, like, give it a week so that there's time that's not over a holiday for, for potential community members or, or council members to put their name in the hat, so to speak. My worry, Phil, I know you put the agenda item on to take this to vote tonight. I, I have no problem with that going on there. I think, I value the fact that any of us can put anything we believe to be good on the agenda. I don't think tonight is the night to vote on this. I think tonight's the night to have a great discussion, get a lot out of it. But let's be honest, we've, we as a council have only known about this news, I believe it's now seven days. Several of those have been holidays. The community has only known for five days, I think, maybe it's six days. This hasn't had a chance to, to really let it settle for a few, for even a couple of normal working days out there. And so for that reason, I, I, I'm in favor of opening it, so it does not, so we're not restricted to council members, leaving it in council's control to appoint who we want to appoint, but not taking this to a vote tonight. Those are, I'll rest at that.
Uh, thanks, Hugh. Annie, I saw your hand up. Allow me to say something before, and I'll return back to you, Annie. Is that one of the considerations that has come up is that time is of the essence, because we only have 90 days. We don't want to get our back against the wall. We're coming into the first of the year. We got a lot of things we're working on, Trailhead, these other things that we have to make decisions on. Consideration could be this, is that because this is a temporary situation, for the most part, about 10 months, we're going to be appointing somebody. The learning curve to bring somebody in who's not been involved in any of this would probably be up to speed by the time the person would be out of office. It would, by doing the process of allowing selection from the council, it would allow the citizens to time to say, okay, by April, I want to fly off of this position and do their campaigning and educate themselves to run for this position. So having said that, I'll recognize, Annie, I saw your hand up. I apologize if I haven't seen anybody else's hand. Like I said, my screen is limited, so, Annie?
Um, you had asked the question about whether to go with a citizen process of selection or with the council. And I guess the question I wanted to know in order to kind of decide on between those two options or some combination of them, is who on the council is interested in doing this work?
I am.
Well, I've already voiced it. I have an interest in it also. So we're jumping into the who right off the bat. Is anybody else?
I would consider it. My hand is more for a comment, though.
Okay. Uh, go ahead with your comment.
My comment is, in regards to your, your comment, Mike. That's why I think it's so, your comment was about the ramp-up time for a citizen or somebody who has not been involved. I think that that's a moot point, because it'd be up to the council to appoint the person. So we did not think the person was capable of taking office quickly. We wouldn't appoint them. So that, I would hope that would be for council's considerate, for council's consideration. I don't think that should be a concern or a worry about whether or not a citizen might want to put their names in the hat who's not already elected. So say, hey, we don't think that, we don't think they're the right person to fit the role for the next 10 months, 11 months, we wouldn't appoint them.
Right. I think, I'm sorry, any other hands up? Dan, you have your hand up. Comment, please?
Uh, yeah, I would just speak in agreement with council member receivers in reference to the appointment of a, a community member. That it is the discretion of a council member in making that nomination. And further, it's the discretion of the council and a judge, or in a voting action, to determine if that is a worthy candidate. So to me, that really kind of secures the notion that I believe council members should be able to nominate either another council member or a member of the community, meeting the two restrictions that Katie outlined.
You have the comments from council?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who was that? Chris? Thank you. Once again, I apologize, because I couldn't see on the screen. Go ahead, Chris.
So it seems that now we have, what's amounting to maybe another legal question that we may not get an answer to tonight, is whether or not we can combine those two options, where we would have the opportunity to consider people from the community, recognizing that sitting council members are also part of that community. So that's a question I would love to have answered. And obviously, like you said, Katie, is Sean going to be here later tonight, or is he out the whole night?
He's out the whole evening.
Yes. So if I could jump in and
Go ahead, Katie.
Give you my perspective. If you identify a process by which council members will nominate individuals, they could, you could identify those individuals as either being council or the community members. So I think if you identified that process and that they were qualified applicants, I think you could move forward with that combination.
Anybody else? Any other council member might make a comment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Annie, you had your hand up. Please, please?
So my question is, does it, do we have to have a council member nominate, or can people self-nominate?
You can do both.
So you would have to define that. If you do self-nominate, then we would have to publicly advertise it, and there would be criteria of some sort. We would receive applications, and then the council could take those applications into consideration.
Thank you.
So if I might interject, I'm sorry, somebody else's hand was up? Phil, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Sorry, I'm not feeling 100% tonight, so excuse me if I'm a little scratchy. I have a little bit of a different perspective, maybe. While we have probably several great candidates that, from the citizens, we currently have seven city council members that have all been elected by the citizens. Seems to me that the smart A-choice is to select from the current sitting council position, because they are all elected officials by the citizens. And then whoever the appointment person is will choose to run or not in November. Kind of compare it to how the Spokane Valley does it. They all get elected, and then they choose their mayor, although we're only doing it for 10 months. So that's kind of how I approach it. Also approach it with that regard in the fact of, if you have a current council member who has the experience, the time, and the know-how, and knows how the staff works, knows how the city works, knows how the council works, might be a little bit less disruptive taking over that position. In backfilling council position, a lot less disruptive to the council, because there's six other council members that have been doing the job for quite some time. So that's what I think. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
You've got Dan and I. But, Dan, you want to go first?
Um, okay, sure. I'm grateful for Phil's observation with respect to elected official. What I want to recognize, and I'll use myself as an example. I believe that I probably got somebody's vote as a city council member, but I probably didn't earn their vote as a mayor, and they probably wouldn't vote for me. Sorry. But it's like, but it's like, you know what I mean? It's like, I, I braced and embraced our community for a role. And this role, this mayor, is pretty different. And so I don't necessarily think that that puts me in a stead favor with voters, so.
Okay, so, you know, Phil, great points, and I think both options, actually, three options, I guess, community, council, or a combination of both, have their own positives and negatives. I will say, my one, my, my challenge with a community member, it has already been stated, you know, the ramp-up time, the unfamiliarity with who is, who is who on the staff and whose responsibilities are what. You know, I was, I was reviewing, once again, I do on a regular basis, our mayor and council member handbook. You know, and it cautions, you know, even, even for, you know, a new mayor coming in, it can take up to six months to get up to speed. And so, you know, by that time, we'll, we'll be almost ready for an election. My challenge with combining the two is, I think we run into a little bit of a conflict. If we, as a council, are interviewing those community members, then we also have to interview our, you know, we'll have to interview the council. And then how do we have that discussion as a council if we have a, have a mixed bag of applicants? I do favor, you know, having somebody from the council who has the experience and temperament and desire to fulfill the position, to, you know, hopefully easily step in the role. I think Shane has set us up for great success. I can't think of a better time since I've been on council for somebody to step in and take over very easy. You know, someone from the council, and I think it'll be a quick ramp-up for that person. And, you know, and, you know, so, you know, if it should happen that that person's appointment is going to run in November, then great. If not, you know, that's their choice. But, you know, I, I'm definitely leaning toward appointing a council member at this point. Whether or not I was interested in doing it, I think it's the best for the city.
Thanks, Chris. Good comments. I see Hugh. I suddenly have everybody on my screen. Hello, everybody. Hugh, I see your hand up, Hugh. Pardon? Right, I just saw Odin, but I believe I saw Hugh's first. I think you're, you're muted.
Sorry, Odin, would you like to go first?
No, I yield. Go ahead.
Okay. Great comments tonight, guys. Phil, I, for Mark alongside of you, I, I agree with you that we were elected. I also agree with Dan that we were elected for a different position. But it's obvious that the ramp-up time for any, any one of the seven of us is going to be a lot quicker going in. That makes the seven of us a probably more obvious choice, but we don't know who might be appointed. I also, we are, the process for appointment, if we're talking about citizen engagement, is not defined. So we're talking as if we assume that there has to be an interview process. I don't know that there does. Because we don't have a specific process for appointing a mayor. We've got a specific process for appointing the city council. But we may be able to say, hey, we want to do this next Tuesday. Anybody that wants to put their name in the hat, if we've never heard of them, they're probably not going to get appointed. And, you know, we're just being honest here. But if somebody that, we were all very familiar with, happened to get appointed, you know, who, who knows what happens over the course of a week? We just haven't had enough time to, to let the dust settle on this. And I, I don't know that we need to do a big, long advertising process and, you know, multi-step interview process. I think it's going to be really obvious to us if somebody puts their name in the hat that we agree with. So I would like to keep it open to people that are not on the council, keep it mixed, but just make an appointment process, so anybody on council can appoint what really wants.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to share my approval of what Phil said and as well as Chris. We've been elected to make decisions, and the decision is not to pass it off to somebody else to make the decision. The decision is our decision. The electorate will have their say in 10 months or so. And in this particular incident, the public gets a double say, because they not only get a 10-month say, they'll get a two-year-later say. So to intimate that they are not involved in this, or they're being left out, or perhaps there's some better choice, that'll come to light really quick during an election. So our main objective is to fill the slot, move on. This doesn't have to be a complicated process. The only people that are going to complicate it are the ones in this meeting, and we don't have a reason to. As far as having a process where we interview everyone, et cetera, I do find that I like some of the other council members who said that that would be the process used, the same as we did with a council person. And I'm telling you why. Because I have every intent to make the statement that even if we close the nomination to outside of the council, I would still ask tonight that those interested submit a resume, submit a view of what they intend to do, what their vision is for the city. Just because you sit on the council doesn't give you the right not to be interviewed by the rest of the council and to have somebody picked that they feel would make the best leadership and have the best vision. So I would still ask that, in that So I would still ask that and that it be accomplished in a week. Doesn't take long to, to write down your resume. And it doesn't take long to write down your vision. Submit it to the council and we'll have a, a better direction of who we want to pick by next council. So that's, that's my feeling. But right now, I firmly believe that we have been elected to make the decision. Yes, we're out of our boat a little bit when it comes to the mayorship. However, most of us have been through other mayors before. I think we got kind of a feel of how to step into those positions and to move forward with unity. So I'd like to see us do that, starting with closing out the, uh, the possibility and narrowing it down to coming from the council, who are the best suited for this position. Thank you.
Uh, Hugh, I saw your hand come up, but I would like to interject. I was waiting to make sure everybody had an opportunity to speak. I'd like to have an opportunity to speak myself. I'm in favor that we look at, fill this position from within the council. And I see several positive reasons there, but probably the most that jumps up has got me since day one is that when we had Mayor Shane come in, he was a council member for eight years. So he is already working with staff, staff knew who he was, we knew who he was, other council members knew who he was. And that transition, I feel, was very, very smooth. And I think that was huge for us moving forward. I, I can see one thing, if this was a four-year term and where, and somebody was going to be there, or even the remainder of the three years on it. But they're going to be there for the most, maybe 10 months or so on it. So I think we're more than qualified, all of us, to fill this position. And, uh, to me, that still makes the most logical way is that how can we be the least disruptive for staff and council moving forward? Well, that's all I have on that. Uh, Hugh, I did see your hand up. Did you want to say something? Yes, go ahead, Hugh.
Oh, those are, uh, great ideas. I love the idea of a resume and a bit of a vision of what you want to do over the next nine months or 10 months, 11 months. I, I, I'm just struggling with why, um, why we want to force it to be closed. If we're given a week, why wouldn't we allow somebody to throw a resume in? We don't have to nominate them. Why, why would we close it down to say, nope, we're so close-minded, it has to be one of us seven? What would be the, what would be the problem with somebody throwing a resume in and a vision? And we get to look at it and say, never heard of you? Doesn't look good to me? Not going to nominate you? They got to do it within a week. Or maybe somebody throws one in, they're correct. I, I, I just don't see where, where we go wrong with doing that, with closing it to only council. Yeah, I'm just, correct me where, where I'm wrong, I guess.
I didn't see other hand up, so I'd like to interject is that, uh, I, I think all those ideas have, have merit. The bottom line is what we want to accomplish in our six o'clock here is at which direction we're going there. I think that's critical. The last thing we want to do is to have this meeting in the end of six o'clock and not have direction for staff and also council and the citizens. One of the challenges I see, if we open it up to a lot of individuals or any individual to submit an application, if we were to set tonight and say, well, if anybody's interested, get it to us within the next week. Be honest with you, I don't think that's fair to the citizens. Because the challenge is, how do we get that information out there to them? Where somebody will come in, we could have down the road and say, well, you didn't give me enough time. You gave it a week, uh, I don't think it was fair. So how do we deal with it at that point? So I'm not against the idea, but I just wanted to throw that out. Thanks. Uh, Dan, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so, you know, in regard to that, recognizing Hugh's observation that there isn't a lot of downside, I think, to saying it has to be an only council member action. What, what I had foreseen is council members would make a nomination. And when I say that, I mean, we're not asking, I'd say, to solicit from people in general, per se, as much as each one of us, should we be motivated and, and interested to step forward with a name? Granted, that the person who is that name reasonably is interested in proceeding. At that moment, you know, here's the resume, here's the vision, here's all those things that are really important. But in that regard, Mike, it addresses the notion of, are we letting people give enough time? And I'll pause and just say, no, I want to, I want to respond to Odin's observation that we make this decision. That I think it's reasonable that I can make as a council member a nomination using the judgment that I've been endowed as a voted-in member. And that from that nomination, then, oh boy, here's the resume and here's the vision, here are all the other pieces that now allow the rest of this group to make that determination. And if I nominate my cousin Vinnie, seriously, you guys don't have to vote. Seriously, it's all no, really. But that is no harm, no foul, and further creates opportunity. And that's what I want to recognize.
Okay, if I may reiterate, is that the three things were what and how, when, and the who. I think what we're still on is that what and the how, and also when seems to be coming up. The when would be is we try to get something in a week or two weeks or a month down the road. So I'd like to do is, uh, with the council, continue to steer towards where are we going with this? We've got about 25 minutes left. I think it's a great discussion, very impressive. But let's keep in mind, our focus is to get a decision made. We're not so much a decision, a consensus. Because the consensus will let us, allow us to move forward into our regular meeting where we're going to allow comments from the citizens and how we can move forward on this. With that in mind, any further comments from the council? Yes, Dan?
So maybe to that effect, Mike, um, I know we, I don't think we're taking motions here in our workshop up yet. Katie, answer, I think, yeah. So maybe, you know, in a, yeah, so maybe what, in a, in a seven o'clock hour, we'd, we'd say, um, as a motion, perhaps, the process that we will take to get a new mayor is each council member will voice a nomination. And that nomination given by a council member may be themselves. Or it may be another person who has the qualifications to be the mayor. And, you know, it seems like that, that I think delivers on a council member or a community member. Maybe, Mike, does that respond to your question?
I, I think it really does. The key thing for me is that I'm trying to steer is that, you know, we have basically two choices here. And the more we discuss it, the more we discuss it, the beneficial it is for somebody else who is leaning one direction will say, you know, that has merits. So that's the great thing about the discussion. Uh, I, I caution us is that if we don't have some sort of consensus moving forward to the seven o'clock, when we get into a discussion there, all we're doing is transferring this discussion to the seven o'clock. So keep that in mind. Counsel, where would you like to go from here?
Um, sorry.
Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I, I guess.
Cousin Vinnie, want to bring Vinnie back up?
Seriously. And you know what? If you don't want to vote for Vinnie, man, that was easy. But, um, you know, to that effect, Mike, that I'd say direction aspect. Yeah, I would look for, um, I think it's reasonable to say, voice a nomination as a council member. That, you know, uh, given that, uh, we arrange then for this council to vote on each of the provided nominations. That in, uh, sequence, then, we would vote down to the, I'd say, resolute majority who is reflected, uh, from amongst those nominations. That's kind of as a, a direction, kind of an action I'd, I'd advocate.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, Hugh, I see Chris's hand has been up for a little period of time. Yes, Chris?
No, I, I just want to, um, advocate again for keeping it within the council. To Odin's point, uh, again, you know, we, we've been elected to do a job, we need to do our job.
Uh, Hugh, you had your hand up?
I would advocate that we, um, uh, keep it open to council nomination, whether council member or citizen. And I'll just tack on that, uh, I like what Odin said that, uh, also put a requirement of a, of a resume and vision or some sort of statement together from said nominations.
Further comments from council? Uh, Phil, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Hugh, thank you, uh, for the input on the second part of that. Just to keep it simple and small bites, can we just keep the motions simple and small bites? If we can just agree on, is it from the council or is it, uh, only? Or is it a nomination of the council as one question or one motion? And then the follow-up motion, as you just said, can we, uh, also, once that decision's been made, have a scheduled time for presentations of who, what, when, where, why?
Good. Any other hands up? Uh, yes, Chris, please.
Yeah, trying, trying to keep us on legal track. We're, we're in a workshop with no scheduled vote during this time. So, um, you know, we can continue to talk, um, but we would need to make that vote during the regular meetings. But it's also not on the agenda, so, um, I'm not quite sure where that leaves us. Katie, you're on mute.
All right, Katie, you have a comment?
Could I, could you unmute me or am I unmuted?
Good.
I think you are.
I think, um, so we have about 20 more minutes. I think there's kind of two pivotal questions here. So let me do my best to paraphrase what those two questions are. And you're right, we don't want a form of vote, but we do want consensus of the council. So if the majority of you feel that we're going to go in this direction or this direction, it would be helpful for Mayor Protem and myself to know. So the first question is, it sounds like there's agreement that the nominations for the candidates to be considered, uh, will come from the council. The question is, is it going to be open to just council or is it going to be also open to the community? So maybe I'll pose the question this way. If you think it should, the nomination should just be from the existing city council, could you let us know and, um, maybe kind of go around the screen and have you all weigh in on that question? Before we go on, though, is I did hear that a resume and a vision will be asked for all of the candidates. I did hear that. And I also heard time is of the essence. And so maybe we could pick a one or two week duration. If Mike, does that make sense? So the first question is, should the nominations just come from city council or should they come from the council and the community?
Chris, I see your hand up.
Just real quick before we do that, we need to add, um, something to the end of that. Regardless of what that decision is, we then need to decide on what our voting process will be. Um, obviously, we have a process in place, but when we're appointing, uh, a new council member, but we don't have anything defined for this. So we need to add that to our discussion as well, once we get past this piece.
Thank you.
It seems logical, whatever we think the majority is leaning towards, we could come up with a consensus. And then moving into the seven o'clock meeting, we can certainly extend that discussion. Has everybody, is that logical to everybody?
It, that would fall in, um, number nine? Or not, because we have workshop discussion on the agenda, but it's crocked out.
Well, it's. We do not have a workshop scheduled at this point. We could, when we get into the seven o'clock, we can certainly amend our agenda to whatever the council so desires.
Yeah, it sounds like we pretty much have agreement that we don't want to make the vote tonight. Is that, if that's what I'm hearing, my proposal would be somebody, somebody at the seven o'clock meeting during the agenda approval, move to remove, um, consent agenda item A and add, add further workshop discussion, um, for number nine, if that works for people.
Yep.
Could you repeat that, Chris?
No, I, I would just suggest that, um, you know, it, it sounds right now like everybody is fairly much in agreement that we don't want to use the vote tonight. So I would propose that someone move, um, for an agenda amendment. When we get to that, it's the seven o'clock hour, to remove consent agenda 10A and add, um, the, the follow-up workshop discussion at number nine.
Sounds right.
Phil, I saw you, I, I saw your hand go up, Phil.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it was my, I asked to have that put on the agenda and it was my intent to give us a place to refer to at the seven o'clock meeting to be able to have a motion on any action, whether needed or not, from this workshop. So I just want everybody to realize, uh, it was not my intent to appoint a mayor. It was just, uh, give us the ability to make a decision on whatever our discussion was. So, thank you.
I, I, I agree. I, I do believe that was your intentions, Phil. Oh, did I see your hand going up?
Yeah.
Thumbs up, okay? Counsel, tell me, where would you like to go from here? Uh, Phil, I saw your hand go back up.
So just to clarify then, are you suggesting that we take away 10A from the consent agenda and follow up on our workshop discussion under item nine on our seven o'clock agenda? Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Sorry, Chris, can't hear you.
Go ahead, Chris.
But I was trying to find my button, sorry. Yeah, that, that's what has to happen because, because if, if we go by the letter of the law, consent agenda items technically can't be debated or are not supposed to be debated. So to move it, to remove that from the consent agenda and put it in under workshop would, is really appropriate, actually, to take the agenda.
I'm, I'll, I'll address that when the time comes.
Okay. Because my assumption is going to be if, when we start the seven o'clock meeting and we still make those changes, which is totally the desire of the council, they choose to do that, that we would look at scheduling in another meeting if we're going to be making decisions and how we'll go about that. Uh, Odin?
When we say that we don't want to take a vote tonight, I think that's being expanded out of context. I believe the majority doesn't want to take a vote during this workshop meeting. We're all, I'm fairly sure, still open to taking a vote, but have the vote done at the seven o'clock meeting. So the motion could simply be, do we want to open this up to everybody else? Or do we want it to come to the council and take your vote? That's it. That's all that's got to be accomplished, at least tonight. We can go further if everybody wants to. But at least we set the path that we're going to be moving on. So I'm well-equipped to make a vote at the seven o'clock meeting, just not at the six o'clock.
Right, yeah, Odin, I'm sorry, I should have made myself more clear. What I had meant was remove the vote to appoint, to actually appoint a mayor. It not, not to move the vote for how we're going to do it or what the process is, thanks. I should have been more clear on that.
Uh, thank you, Odin. Thank you, Chris. Uh, Annie, I saw your hand go up.
Well, yeah, I, Katie had asked a question of us and are we answering that question for her at this meeting?
Katie, would you like to restate that, what you said? What your recommendation or question was?
So for purposes of moving forward, it's, so let me just summarize what I think I'm hearing from everyone is to take the item that's 10A on your agenda and move it to a workshop for the council to take an action related to the selection of process. Not necessarily the individual.
Right.
But the process. And so then we can have a vote on the process. What I was thinking was we could, rather than take a vote, we could kind of get a consensus of the council in this workshop and then take that consensus to the agenda for a vote. So does that clarify, um, Councilmember Kurt? So what I was thinking is, we could come out of here with kind of a decision on, are we going to open it up to anybody in the community or just a council? Kind of decide that here, but not formally vote on it until the council.
That's what.
The reason why I'm saying that is I'm expecting a, a very, very large number of public comments. And you guys will hear those comments before you take your final vote. So even though the consensus of the council is to go left instead of right or right instead of left, you could always vote however you want after you listen to the citizens' comments.
Annie, you still have the floor?
No, I'm good, I'm, I'm good with identifying a process at the seven o'clock meeting and voting on the process.
Okay.
Agreed.
I see some thumbs up and stuff, let me, uh, uh, Chris, you have a thumbs up, very good.
Yep.
Uh, we have about, we have about 10 minutes to go, but let, let me interject this at, at this point on it. Do we feel that we have a consensus from the council that we're satisfied with our discussion and where we feel we're moving forward? To where we can, we can certainly end this meeting early and, and take a break before the seven o'clock meeting, but at least have the feeling that we have accomplished something, and we have somewhat of a decision, or at least a consensus made, which allows us to move forward. Am I reading that correctly?
I think so, Mike.
Thank you, Dan. Phil, I see, yes, go ahead, Phil.
I just have one comment, I look forward to, uh, citizen comments in just a little bit, thank you.
Hugh, I see you nodding your head. Chris? Annie? Hugh, I know you're floating around there.
Yeah. I'm good.
So if, if, if that is, uh, to, to the council's pleasure, I think what we can do is that during this meeting, uh, during this meeting, and then reconvene at seven o'clock, when we start a seven o'clock meeting.
Light up at seven o'clock.
Everybody feel.
Yeah, so for the citizens out there, you can stay connected. We, the, the, I, I just want the citizens to realize they don't need to log off and log back in, just sit tight.
Right, and, and with the citizens that are, I really participate, or appreciate all of the council does and staff, that I see we have a lot of individuals who have tuned in on this, and I'm really looking forward to hearing your comments or thoughts, because, uh, you know, if you think back, that's one thing we're always asking the citizens, to get involved, let us know what you think. So I'm looking forward to citizen comments. I'll say this in our seven o'clock meeting, and I want to say it now, and I'll reiterate it during the seven o'clock, is because we anticipate a lot of people speaking, we have a three-minute time, uh, Todd will have that displayed, and we really are going to stick to that. So I really appreciate if you, why I mention that now, it'll give you about 10 minutes, get your thoughts together, and when we get to citizen comments, uh, you'll be precise. With that in mind, uh, we could close out the meeting and reconvene at seven o'clock. Meeting adjourned.